Parcel number two, which is 79150-01-01. And parcel number three, which is 79536-0101. That was on the Garvey area along the 10 freeway. Also want to just report out that Mr. Paul Cook, who had filed their appeal on the municipal, actually, the municipal court, when I was there, took it up to the California Supreme Court and was denied for the second time when he actually put the actual appeal. So just want to state that for the record. Alright, so at this point, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, close the study session. That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cruz Baca. Any objections? See you now, sir. Move. Alright, so at this point, I'd like to end up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. Today's May 18th, 2016, and the time is 7:10. At this point, we'll have, well, Councilmembers aren't here. I'm not certain if Pastor Jackson, is he here? I'm going to have Councilmember Cruz Baca lead us in an invocation followed by the flag. So all those that are able to stand, please do so. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we're all gathered here to this meeting, and please give our council members and our residents the wisdom and the knowledge to be able to make the right choices, especially for our community. We do this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to say thank you, and good evening to everyone. I'm not certain councilmembers have anyone they wish to close on behalf. If not, at this point, we're going to go into roll call. Madam City Clerk, Marie Contreras, will lead us in the roll call. And Alejandra Davila, thank you. And Chrissy. Alright, so at this point, go ahead.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
He will not be with us this evening, so I'm going to go ahead. Excuse him.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Yeah.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much, Marie. Appreciate that. Alright, so at this point, since we don't have any questions, we're going to go into the presentations that we have. The first one we're going to bring up is the presentation by Art Lehe, Chief Executive Officer of MetroLink and the Southern California Regional Rail Authority regarding train noise and quiet zone. Boy, we're going to love this one. Come on up here. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking your time to be here.
My pleasure.
Yes, I agree.
By the way, in Ireland, they say lehe.
Oh, lehe.
After, out here, they usually say lehe, but I answered anything beginning with L.
Alright, thank you very much for correction.
I'm pleased to be here. Thank you for having me, although I, obviously, the circumstances are regrettable. I'm going to tell you a little bit about where we are. This issue really flows from an accident that occurred last year in Oxnard. The National Transportation Safety Board came out and did an investigation. They own the investigation, and they prohibit discussion in public as to what may have been the cause of the accident, or the contributory causes, or whatever else. It is prohibited until they issue their report. For several months, we have been imploring them to please issue their report. So as regards the details of the accident, I'll be a little non-disclosure, but I can tell you how that has led to the situation that we now face. I acknowledge it's a bad situation. I've heard the trains, the horns. I know how loud they are. I know how loud the locomotives are. I understand entirely the complaints, and I regret that we're in the situation that we're in. Here's the part where it gets a little, I'll be a little tentative. So we had an accident. A truck got onto the right-of-way about 4 o'clock in the morning. It was dark. Rode some several hundred feet and then got stuck. The operator of the truck left the truck, ran away. Meanwhile, the train was approaching. The lights were not on, as I recall. I could be wrong on that. In any case, the train hit the truck, and the long and the short of it was there was a derailment. The reasons for that will come out later on, but there was a derailment. In the remainder of it, there were maybe 150 serious injuries involving surgeries and things of that nature, and one fatality. Following our review of this situation, we concluded that there could be, there could have been a performance issue with the equipment. I wish I could say more about that. Erring on the side of safety, we decided to lease these locomotives, put them in the front of the train, so that in the event there was a repeat accident, we would not have an issue similar to the type that we had in Oxnard. That really is what leads us to the problem. It was a one-year lease. We're about halfway through it right now. We have been in touch with folks in Washington as late as yesterday, asking them please to get their investigation done. Meantime, we have done some work on the accident, and we are, I believe, in a couple of weeks, we will have a cure for the problem that we may have, and we'll promptly move to implement that, which will obviate the need for the locomotives. Our goal is to get rid of them as soon as possible. The lease expires in October. We're not going to extend the lease. But we want to get things fixed up so we can give them back to Burlington Northern as quickly as possible. So we're highly motivated. We have complaints from all over the county, so they are sincere complaints. I'm not minimizing them in any fashion. This is a serious problem, and we're looking forward to get it cured as quickly as we possibly can. We will know more in about two weeks, I hope, in terms of what a fix might be and what kind of timeline there may be. I want you to know that I have directed our operations guys to prepare right now to get the fix done. If, in that event, we will be going to our board of directors and talking about how we pay for that and how we remedy the issue on as rapid a basis as possible. I apologize for the situation. We're stuck in this bind between this problem of the noise against a potential safety issue, and that really, really puts us in a bad place. Let me just say, a little bit off that topic, we would look forward, I've been with MetroLink about a year now. We look forward to working with you on quiet zones. When I was in Orange County at OCTA, we did some quiet zones in Santa Ana and City of Orange, and they were very successful. The community was very happy with them, so that's not a solution to this immediate problem. It'll take a little longer than that. I've discussed that also with Metro in terms of getting funding for quiet zones in this area. So again, I'll acknowledge the problem. I apologize for the problem that we have, and I hope, although it will be bleak, I hope that my explanation at least sheds a little light as to what's going on here. I'll be pleased to try to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, real quick question. So what is it that will be possibly implemented within the next couple of months?
I'm sorry?
What is it that will possibly be implemented in the next couple of months?
I'm not permitted to discuss the accident.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's fine.
Suffice it to say, so I'm going to be tentative, just because of what I've just said with the NTSB. We believe there may have been an issue, and we believe that we're close to determining what a fix might be to that potential issue. So I've directed staff to be prepared to implement that fix on a hurry-up ASAP basis.
Okay. Alright, I think, yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Our main concern, and we do understand that the horn, and I mean, it's understood that the horn has to every crossing for safety purposes, even if you've got that thing that comes down or whatever. But it just seems like there are certain, either engineers or certain trains, that are extremely loud. From what I understand, it's the BSNF that's pulling the metro now, right? There are times lately where I can't even talk in my kitchen, because it is so loud that I have to ask someone to please wait so that I can continue my conversation. I hear it from a lot of the businesses that are along Ramona Boulevard near the station. The people that live right next to the railroad tracks as the train is passing through the other two crossings that we have on Merced and Francis Kito?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
That's, I think that's what our residents are concerned about, the excessive noise, extreme early in the morning and late at night. I understand the safety, and I think we all do, but does it have to be that loud and for that length of time?
We have looked at trying to mute the horn. The horn is within federal regulations. We'd have to get their approval on what a fix, whatever that fix might be. And so we put our engineering effort against curing the problem and getting rid of these things as quickly as we can. I should note that Peter Mueller, a coworker of mine from MetroLink, is with me. We had a quick snack a few blocks south of here. We could easily hear the horns some two or three blocks away. So I believe what you've just said. What we are doing is, in the early morning hours, when the first trains come through from the east, let me back up. So there's a locomotive on each end. The front locomotive, one locomotive is ours, and that's the traditional one that did not generate this level of complaint. The other end, the orange locomotive, is the BN locomotive, and that's the one that's generating the problem. We're looking to get, the horns that honk are in the front of the train, whichever direction it goes. Now, it goes to Union Station, pulls in, and it pulls out in the opposite direction. That is background. Our goal is to put the BN locomotives, the orange ones, in the back of the train on the early AM trips westbound, so that they won't be in the front and therefore won't be honking those horns. We're working on that right now to get that in effect, so at least we mitigate some of the problem for the early AM trips. So, and we're trying to do that all over the county and all the lines that we have here. So we're trying to get this thing figured out. I believe everything you've said. I apologize. You know, if I could, I wish I could say I had a solution for you, but I don't because of what I've just outlined for you. But I will tell you, we are bound and determined to get a fix in as quickly as we can, so that we can make this, you know, so that we don't have to use these orange locomotives.
Mayor?
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
First, I'd like to say thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
I appreciate the time and the attention that you've given to this matter and for prioritizing it. It sounds like you want to tackle this with urgency, and I really do appreciate that. For a few years now, we've heard from our residents about, you know, the noise, the blaring noise, especially in the morning. And so I definitely want to thank you for being here. And as far as, you know, the MetroLink, it has been an asset to our community. We are in the process of developing a transit-oriented district, and so if there are any funds that we could, any grant monies that we could look at as we develop the TOD, because it really is such an asset here for our community, and I think we recognize that, you know, is there any funding, any grant opportunities that we can consider as we develop this TOD and make it more friendly to the residents that we're trying to attract, and then obviously to those who are here? So that's one thing I wanted to share with you, too, as we look at a solution to this.
That sounds exciting. We are working with Metro as regards a potential sales tax measure that they're discussing, as you know, and there are several things that would be very beneficial in San Gabriel. One is, much of that line is single-tracked. That means there's one pair, one pair of tracks. So if that track is occupied, all the other trains back up, which leads to poor on-time performance. We're proposing to do additional double-tracking. That means two pairs of tracks for as much of the right-of-way as possible. We'd like to run more midday and late-night trains, and we'd like to do some quiet zones, which would be very successful, I believe. We'd be happy to come out and meet with the city manager, Mr. Yahtzee. I've met with other cities in the last few months on this same regard. Bring our grants people out, maybe arrange a meeting with us, the city and Metro, to talk about what, how we might work together in Sacramento and Washington to find funding.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And Art, if you could just clarify, because I think you had mentioned that the BN locomotives will be gone no later than sometime this fall, was it?
October.
October, okay.
We're not going to extend that lease. I am urgently pushing to get, I don't want to extend the lease. You know, this is, we're not neutral on this. We don't want to do it. I mean, if I may make one more comment about working with you guys, I've been with MetroLink for about a year. Some of the things I've seen are surprising to me, and one of them is that in the 23, 25 years we've been in business, we haven't had any dialogue with the host cities that have stations. So apropos of Councilmember's question about working together on grants, I've asked that we begin to come out on, you know, a couple, three, four times a year to talk with the city manager, to talk about what are we doing that might be causing troubles, and let's work together. We're working with Covina and Burbank and other cities, folks up in Anlolo Valley, to figure out what we can do to make our service more valuable to you and more helpful in supporting TOD activities all around Southern California.
Any further questions? Thank you for the report.
Thank you for your time.
And we're looking forward to that surprise.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Got to catch that train, right? Go. Alright, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Alright, the next presentation that we have, we have the presentation, a proclamation recognizing May 2016 as the National Bicycle Month. Who's handling this? Do we have anyone that's going to speak on this? Introduce yourself. Oh, Efren. Oh, Efren. Hey, brother, how you doing? I haven't seen you a long time.
It's been a year.
It sure has. Alright. Well, you want to talk about that? We're going to present you with the proclamation.
We just want to say little things here again. My name is Zephra Moreno. I'm a co-founder and vice president of Bike San Gabriel Valley, and we are an organization that advocates for cyclists and pedestrians in the San Gabriel Valley to make it a safer and more fun place to ride your bike and walk. So we are very honored to be here, to accept this certificate recognizing May as Bike Month. But I would like to introduce you to Diane Velez, a Baldwin Park native, who's an intern with our organization.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for, thank you for inviting Bike SGV. I actually just wanted to talk on behalf of, as a Baldwin Park resident, growing up in this community and now coming back as a public health professional, of how important it is for Baldwin Park to really support safer sidewalks, bike lanes, and also just making a healthier community. So I know that we've already kind of started going on that route, but we could do a lot more for our community in terms of bike infrastructure. I also am part of the Women on Wheels group at Bike SGV, which helps to promote more women in San Gabriel Valley to ride their bikes to feel safer and to feel empowered to be on the road. And so we just wanted to come out here and let residents know, too, about our Golden Streets, which is going to happen June 26, 6/26. And that's going to close down the streets from South Pasadena all the way to Azusa, and it's going to be an open streets event, so similar to something like Ciclovia, but it's to celebrate the San Gabriel Valley. And we do have flyers and banners for everyone in the audience.
Awesome. Alright, thank you. I'm going to read this, the actual proclamation. We'll have you come up here once I finish reading. "The bicycle and viable environmentally sound form of transportation and excellent form of recreation. LA County residents have the opportunity to experience the joy of bicycling during the month of May through educational programs, races, commuting events, Metro Bike Week events, or just getting out and going for the ride. Bicycling has great potential to have a positive impact on the local economy and tourism industry and to stimulate economic development by making the region attractive to business and citizens who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyle. Creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution." And May has been declared a national Bike Month for each of the last 59 years, and in so, again, in 2016, the League of American Bicyclists, Bike SGV, Bicycle Club, schools, and other groups, cities across the state of California will be promoting bicycling during the month of May. So on behalf of the City Ballpark, we present this proclamation. I want to, real quick, invite both of you to our concert. We have about 1,000, 2,000 people that congregate there. To be able to have you speak to the large crowds, I think it's very important. So, coming up here, all you know, the first bike I ever had was back in the late 60s, Royce Union. Anyone remember? I don't know that, do they still make that bike? No, okay, alright. That was my first bike, Royce Union.
I have some comments, Mayor. Last time we had someone here speaking about bicycling, and one of the things that I asked, and I want to be able to do in the future, is maybe have a roundtable discussion. There's a lot of great things happening around bike riding around Los Angeles County and San Gabriel Valley. For example, we talked about Long Beach implementing the Bike Share Program, which is, I mean, it's a very daring undertaking, but it's working. And I also know that Covina just opened a brand-new secure bike parking lot next to the metro, and we do have the metro here. And if we want to encourage people to ride bikes, then you need to be able to provide secure parking, which is really, I think, a lot of people are afraid of their bikes being stolen. And so I think that with the roundtable discussion to figure out how we can get funding and invite both of you to come and join us to see how you can contribute and guide us in that endeavor, I think it's really important that we don't get left behind. You know, other cities are doing it, and it's something I think all of us have been very outspoken in terms of physical activity and being healthy. So I think it's something that we need to explore very quickly, especially because I think I saw a couple of funding opportunities for that, for bikes, parking lots in particular. So when we do, Shannon, let's make sure that we invite everyone to make sure that they participate, and maybe you guys have information that we don't in terms of funding and grant opportunities. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
Real quick, Efren, it would be nice if we could do some kind of closure of, say, the streets between Almani, Baldwin Park, West Covina, Covina, kind of do some kind of route like on a Sunday or something, similar to what they do in LA. I mean, have you guys, go ahead.
Well, that's what we did. We applied for a grant from Metro to do that, and the 6/2 Golden Street is a result of that.
Okay.
And we tied it along with the opening of the Gold Line. And so it's going, starting in South Pasadena, going all the way to Azusa.
Oh, wow.
So, but we're more than willing to work, actually, there is another similar type of event that's happening in Almani, South Almani, but we're always willing to help to have these kinds of events, of course.
And I know that we've also applied for a grant, so let's see what the possibilities are, kind of joint venture there. But come on up here for the proclamation. Do you just got the camera? Oh. Oh, that's right, okay. Brother, how's your niece doing? Is she still living up in South Pasadena?
Pasadena, yeah.
How much have I?
Okay, I will.
Pleasure, thank you very much. Efren, good. I gotta go see her. Alright, here. You sure to say?
It's the Golden Street.
Can I get one else? Go ahead, okay.
I come to the event to get the shirt.
Brother, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brother, nice to see you, man.
Thank you very much. I'll see you.
I'm going to do the part from, yeah, with Laura.
Yeah, let me give one of my cards. Give me a call. You know, let me give it to you, ready?
Oh, okay. So we'll probably be a part of that.
I still have yours.
Yeah, we'll show them information.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alright, so the next one that we have? Alright, the next one that we have here? I'm going to go ahead and skip over and go to the oath of office. So at this point, I'm going to bring up oath of office for appointed Recreation and Community Services Commissioners, Jean M. Ayala, Diana Fernando Robles, Christopher Ciro Sines, and Joanne Watkins.
Hi, sweetie, how are you? Good to see you.
How are you?
Good.
Hi, well, Mayor.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
How are you?
Sure did today.
Huh?
Welcome.
And actually, to see you back.
His dad is one of the sucker.
Are you good to see?
Three are here.
Okay. Alright. You know what we do? Right, it was our talking. Okay, let's have a, yeah, let's have the cameras right up here. We'll face him over here.
Oh, facing you?
Yes. Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and ask that everyone raise their right hand. Hold on a minute, so, at this point, raise your right hand, and go ahead and repeat your name.
Diana Coronado Robles.
Joanne Watkins.
Ayala.
At the end, you will say, "I do." "I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. But I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter."
I do.
Alright, thank you. Congratulations. So at this point, we're going to sign, we're going to have you sign your certificate. Go ahead.
Congratulations.
Bishop.
Mayor.
It's Bishop.
So we just refer to her.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Oh, Chris.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get our picture with everybody. We all fit.
I guess we should film this one?
Yes, sir.
Cover your face.
I know, huh?
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, first of all, I want to thank all the commissioners as well, so looking forward. At this point, we're going to sing happy birthday to Ms. Garcia. Nidia Garcia, today's your birthday? So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and sing, it's Nidia Garcia, right? We're going to sing happy birthday in a count of three. Ready? One, two, so it's Nidia Garcia. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Nidia. Happy birthday to you. Woo! Let's bring her up here, bring her up here. Just come up here. Basil, let's bring her up here. Yes, Basil.
She was so excited to see you.
You're my first Chris already?
Oh, my kids, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to have her introduce.
Oh, they're the kids.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're just doing this real quick.
Bianca, give me a question.
Yeah, bring him up here, the kid, that's fine.
Hello, como estado?
Bienvenido.
Oh, I'm just me.
Oh, Chris.
I do.
Let's give her the certificate. This is hers.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, this is for you. Emily, here you go. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. You like it? All right, thank you very much.
Just real quickly, there's anybody out there, any serviceman, and I know there's a couple, I think Mr. Woods, he served. And so this is, you know, of course, Service Month for all veterans in the military, all branches of government. So just want to say thank you for serving. This is your month, so thank you. It's an honor.
Thank you. All right, the next presentation of certificate of recognition goes to Barbara Collins in honor of her selection by the Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, 2016 Woman of the Year. So is she here? She's in. Thank you. Let's bring her up here. Yes. Congratulations. Thank you very much. All right, congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. The next presentation of certificate of recognition goes to Barbara Collins, 32nd District, Woman of the Year Award, 2016. The City Council congratulates you for being selected Woman of the Year for Ballard Park. We commend you for being a long-term resident, for your long history of volunteerism, leadership, and contribution. You are a true example of an exemplary woman. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to the city of Ballard Park. So thank you on behalf of the city of Ballard Park. That was awesome. Do you want to say some words?
No.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Can I say some words on behalf of the Ballard Park Adult and Community Education? Barbara Collins is also a student of our older adult programs at the Ballard Park Adult and Community Education, and she has also received recognition from our school plus her fellow peers there. We are very honored, and we would like to join in the recognition for her. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yes, and I'd also like. I was just gonna say, you know, she also volunteers so much around her community. She was at our Arbor Day celebration and passing out pamphlets, trying to get people to go green. So thank you so much for everything that you do, Barbara.
And I'd also like to thank all the seniors and especially Barbara that's being honored by Congresswoman Napolitano for all their community volunteer hours that they put into this community. It's very much appreciated. And Denise Tornator wanted me to say she apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, but congratulations on her behalf and Dr. Kerr as well.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, we do have one, the final one, which is the presentation of certificates of recognition to Student Film Festival winners Santiago Sanchez from Saravista High School and Kevin Para from Ballpark High School, senior, and Brian Morgan of Ballpark High School, junior. So let's bring them up here. Come on up here, gentlemen. Yes. Vanessa? No, no, she's not here today. All right, so at this point. Okay. Jenna?
Congratulations. I came out to the pack when you shared.
Okay, so this is to Santiago, Santiago Sanchez and Kevin Para.
He's absent.
Oh, he's absent? Okay, Brian Morgan. This reads, "Congratulations for winning the first-place award on the psychological thriller, 'The Most Dangerous Game' at this year's fifth annual youth film festival. Wish you continued success in your academic activities. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to the city of Ballard Park." We'll have to definitely showcase it for the city of Ballard Park, is that possible? Maybe run it on cable. So I want to present you with the certificate. And then also, Brian, who wants to talk about it, like, our residents will know? Come on up.
Just regarding the film festival?
Yes, yeah, talk to us about the program, your project.
Okay. Good afternoon, sorry, my name is Santiago Sanchez. And, well, the film festival is this festival that is held yearly. It started out at Ballard Park High School, but over the years, we've seen it grow to become something really big. And this year, well, what it is, is us high school students, we gather together, and over the course of two or three months, we put together this film. Usually, there is a theme, but this year, there was not, so I had flexibility of creating a film based on a book that I really enjoyed. And as I said before, over the years, we've seen this film festival just grow a lot, and we hope to see it growing and that the program and the people and the schools and their programs continue to be funded, because it just, it means a lot to me, and I see a lot of hope for the younger generations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The Ballard Park Film Festival is like the only film festival in the Sangre Valley, which is really cool, because it gives us kids like an opportunity to showcase our films to the community and like express our creativity. And I find it like really fun, because you get to like, during your free time, make a film, make people laugh, make people cry, and you know, scare them if you want, but it all depends.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do you want to come up here and take a picture? Take a picture.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, absolutely. You know what I want, come on up here, gentlemen. Manny, what we want to do is place him on the now, so that all the 75,000 residents will know about you and maybe get their photo separately, so you could talk to us about what's transpired. And tomorrow morning, your names will be on the marquee as well. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I like your idea, putting it on the cable.
Yes, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Showcase the talent.
Okay.
For the community.
I want a picture with her. Want a picture up here with him?
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up, let's. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Manny, can I take your camera and take a?
His mother as well as that, huh? So you can take a picture as well. They'll have a camera from there.
Thank you.
Up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
We are very proud of you.
All right, okay, hold on, let's get back in here.
No, no, no. Mom, come on up.
Is this your mom? Oh, let's get in a picture. Someone will take it for you.
Okay. Mom, she's gonna take it.
No.
Come on, mom, come here. Come on, mom.
Felicidades. A que parece con su.
Felicidades.
All right, thank you very much. And also, we're gonna open up the regular City Council, I mean, as well with the Finance and Housing Authority. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go open up the public communication, anyone wishing to speak? Thank you.
Where's that clock? $1,500 later.
Good evening, I'm Ken Woods. I'm a resident and business owner here in Ballard Park. I would like to thank this City Council and all the previous City Councils for keeping us out of the mosquito vector, that program, all these years. You surely knew something we didn't know. Plus, you saved us millions of dollars in tax money, which we appreciate. Next, I'd like to thank those who had a hand in writing the contract with Waste Management. Two items. The Senior Discount. Anyone who is eligible should take advantage of this program. My two-month bill is $30.45. Next, the bulky item pickup. Instead of dumping those couches and mattresses on Alderson, just call Waste Management. They'll come to your house and pick those things up at no charge. Just call Waste Management, it's easy. Just punch one for English and two for Spanish. Thank you.
Hello, City Council, residents of Ballard Park. You know, you people up here really, I don't know what to tell you, but if you go on the Athol Overbridge, coming towards Ballard Park on this side, on the north side, there's a container there, some people there. If that's a residence, you people are sick, and I'm being honest with you. If that people live there, and you people allow that, for these people who live in that container, you are a bunch of sick people. You take care of that, all of you. Also, you people got to understand that we are the people that represent this city. You are only five people that represent this city. So quit being dictators up there. When you do something, you do it for all of us. Or let's put it this way, 99% of us don't do it for 1%. 1%, they'll get through, there's no problem. But you people got to do for all of us. Lately, you're not doing that. The reason why I say that, you open up the pages for eminent domain. Where in this paperwork does it say you're using eminent domain anywhere? Yeah, I'm looking at you guys up there, all of you, you ladies and you. Where does it tell the public you're gonna take somebody's property under eminent domain? You know what? We look like we belong in England instead of the United States of America. Here we stand on constitutional rights, and you people just say, "Oh, forget you. We'll just go around you." I'm looking at all of you. You work for the city of Ballard Park residents, you don't work for you guys as individuals or as a group. But that's what you're doing. Also, you want to open up certain businesses, but you can't control the ones you have now. Good example, you come off of the Frasier Off-Ramp, make a right turn. You're not. 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 You're not.
So I want to present you with the certificate. And also, Brian, who wants to talk about it? Our residents will know.
Just regarding the film festival?
Yes, yeah, talk to us about the program and your project.
Okay. Good evening, sorry. My name is Santiago Sanchez. And, well, the Film Festival is this festival that is held yearly. It started out at Balden Park High School, but over the years we've seen it grow to become something really big. And this year, well, what it is, is us high school students, we gather together, and over the course of two or three months, we put together this film. Usually there is a theme, but this year there was not, so I had flexibility of creating a film based on a book that I really enjoyed. And as I said before, over the years, we've seen this Film Festival just grow a lot, and we hope to see it growing and that the program and the people and the schools and their programs continue to be funded, because it just, it means a lot to me, and I see a lot of hope for the younger generations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The Balden Park Film Festival is like the only film festival in the San Gabriel Valley, which is really cool, because it gives us kids like an opportunity to showcase our films to the community and like express our creativity. And I find it like really fun, because you get to like during your free time, make a film, make people laugh, make people cry, and you know, scare them if you want, but it all depends.
Awesome.
Do you want to come up here and take a picture?
Sure, sure.
Take a picture.
Thank you. Absolutely. You know, what I want, come on up here, gentlemen. Manny, what we want to do is place him on the now, so that all the 75,000 residents will know about you, and maybe get their photo separately, so you could talk to us about what's transpired. And tomorrow morning, your names will be on the marquee as well. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I like your idea, putting it on the cable.
Yes, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Showcase the talent.
Okay.
For the community.
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up, let's. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Manny, can I take your camera and take a?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. And also, we're going to open up the regular city council, I mean, as well with the Finance and Housing Authority. All right, so at this point, we're going to go open up the public communication, anyone wishing to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ken Woods. I'm a resident and business owner here in Baldon Park. I would like to thank this city council and all the previous city councils for keeping us out of the mosquito vector, that program, all these years. You surely knew something we didn't know. Plus, you saved us millions of dollars in tax money, which we appreciate. Next, I'd like to thank those who had a hand in writing the contract with Waste Management. Two items. A senior discount. Anyone who is eligible should take advantage of this program. My two-month bill is $30.45. Next, the bulky item pickup. Instead of dumping those couches and mattresses on Alderson, just call Waste Management. They'll come to your house and pick those things up at no charge. Just call Waste Management, it's easy. Just punch one for English and two for Spanish. Thank you.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldon Park. You know, you people up here really, I don't know what to tell you, but if you go on the Athol Overbridge, coming towards Baldon Park, on this side, on the north side, there's a container there, some people there, if that's a residence, you people are sick, and I'm being honest with you. If that people live there, and you people allow that, for these people who live in that container, you are a bunch of sick people. You take care of that, all of you. Also, you people got to understand that we are the people that represent this city. You are only five people that represent this city. So quit being dictators up there. When you do something, you do it for all of us. Or let's put it this way, 99% of us don't do it for 1%. 1%, they'll get through, there's no problem. But you people got to do for all of us. Lately, you're not doing that. The reason why I say that, you open up the pages for eminent domain. Where in this paperwork does it say you're using eminent domain anywhere? Yeah, I'm looking at you guys up there, all of you, you ladies and you. Where does it tell the public you're going to take somebody's property under eminent domain? You know what? We look like we belong in England instead of the United States of America. Here we stand on constitutional rights, and you people just say, oh, forget you. We'll just go around you. I'm looking at all of you. You work for the city of Baldon Park residents, you don't work for you guys as individuals or as a group. But that's what you're doing. Also, you want to open up certain businesses, but you can't control the ones you have now. Good example, you come off of the Frasier Off-Ramp, make a right turn, and make another right, and there's a mechanic shop or whatever you guys claim that it is. They got cars, junk, it sits there, look like a junkyard, it doesn't look like an automotive center or a repair shop. Don't you people ever look in this city? Or do you just come into this meeting and go home and don't ever look at anything else? Or you don't, I don't think you people even walk in this city. Maybe a couple of you ladies might, but the rest of you, I don't think you even walk in this city. Eminent domain should never have been presented in this city. What are you going to take four persons home?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Don, appreciate it.
There's my three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. My name's Lorraine Martinez, and I've been a resident for the city of Baldon Park for over 30 years. I've participated in all of the recreation program as a youth, and with that I developed a passion for recreation. I applied to serve on the Recreation Services Commission, I'd love your consideration. As I mentioned, I have a strong passion for recreation and many years of experience. I currently work for Alley County Department of Parks and Recreation as a rec manager, and I've been in the field for over 18 years. I would love the opportunity to give back to the city and provide some experience and work with Mr. Carillo and his team, and whatever I can offer to the city, I would love your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Perez. I'm a Baldon Park resident. I have submitted an application for the Metro Village Affordable Housing, because I am low-income, I'm a single parent and have full legal custody of my two children, do not collect child support or any assistance from the county, for say. However, when I submitted my application, I was denied the right to fair housing. I have submitted a claim with HUD, a discrimination claim, and also, what is it? Fair housing complaint, just three different complaints through HUD, because of, I was denied the right to fair housing, so I'm here today to ask you to please consider my application. Being a part of Metro Village would mean a lot to my family, because, because of the things that you guys are offering, like the homework program and the computers, I have two young children that would benefit from that. Also, the location, which is next to the police station, would provide like a safe environment for me and my children, away from violence, drugs, and everything else you encounter in other apartments. I have everything with me, all my information, all I ask is an opportunity to apply. Thank you.
Speak on that at the end. I think, moving along with public communication.
John Rios, resident. One of the things that I was wondering, where do you guys get, giving yourselves a race? And race for the, your car thing, your gas things and everything. You know, you guys are part-timers, you shouldn't even be getting any insurance as part-timers. There's no company that get part-timers, offer them insurance, stuff like that, they might offer overtime and stuff like that, but as part-timers, I don't think you guys are legally can claim, you know, insurance. You know, one of the things, you know, you guys give yourself races, give your car allowance and stuff like that. We have a gas pump right here in the city, where you guys can come in and pick up one of the city cars, if you're going to go around the city. You guys don't. You know, that's one of the things that most of the residents in my area are wondering, they're part-timers, why should they be getting all this? Why should they be getting races? They shouldn't. You, I think this city council is one of the highest-paid in San Gabriel Valley. I think not even Pomona gets that much. So that's, those are the things that we're looking for. We're getting to be a group of citizens that are wondering why, just like that Wayne Manor thing. We went after that, we got the signatures, it's time for us to do the same thing with you guys. Okay? This is Garcia, when we're talking up here, I should wish you would pay attention, and I just sit in the back, okay? You know, that's all for now, you know. Next meeting, I'll probably have some signatures, because this is getting a bit ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Monica, you were absent the last meeting, so I had to save this for this meeting. You were trashing me up here, and you, I want to thank you for reading my ex-wife's 2002 decoration, which sounded just like you three amigos decorations. It was full of lies and never was enforced. You ought to check with your attorney next time. Now, back to you, Monica, you seem to be the spokesman for these other two little men who lost also on the TRO. And I was thinking about, I was going to trash your family with all the dirt that you have, and you know, like your parents had a messy divorce, you at 40 can't keep a man, your brother had a Chapter 7 bankruptcy in 98, you have a condo in Woodland Hills you ran out that you don't claim as income. But I'm not going to dwell on your family dirt, because a friend of mine said something very true about you. That is, you can't fix stupid, and what you need to do is, is just let it go. And the judge even admitted in your TRO case, he even said in court records, you are not a normal person, and I agree with him. I have heard several people tell me, Monica, that you went to the emergency room a few months back, claiming you needed medication. I wonder, is this medication what's affecting your brain with all those things and imaginations that I stalk you and that I want you, and I want to, I want to do some crazy things about you? Let me tell you something, I have the least interest in you, and never stalked you, never been near your house, and never will be. The three amigos here have all done nothing but irrational lawsuits in the last few years here, has cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars because of their abuse. They try to run restraining orders when people talk out on them, they try to scare them with all sorts of tactical moves, with cost attorney fees and everything else. But they use the city money to pay for this stuff, that's their personal use. They got really scared up in Santa Barbara, because I was up there, on my own personal thing. Now, back to the vector scam, is what I call it, Mayor. You sat there and made seniors set through a thing and promised them a free lunch to set through a thing of a vector meeting that was a joke. And this vector is not going to cure the mosquitoes, all they're going to do is hand out literature. Your city can do that. Your city can put it on the webpage. Your city can have these brochures made out through the webpage. You need to learn that we don't want to spend tax dollars unless we have to, and the city hasn't had it for years, and I hope that the people all vote it down. And I've been trying to spread it to everybody to understand that this vector control is not going to cure the mosquitoes, it's only going to be able to come out and say, oh, yes, you have mosquitoes, you pick up the water, clean up the water, we don't have any rights to come on your property. So you need to use common sense on this thing, and you have three little immediate meetings right away, so that you can spend city money to put it on a ballot. So you're going to waste more city money for people to vote it down. Doesn't make much sense. You guys are not being very smart.
Mr. TRO?
Okay, sorry. Thank you very much. Moving along with public communication.
Margarita Vargas, 14129 Ohio Street. I just want to say, now that it's Bike Month this May, you know what, I talked to the men that was speaking here, and I told them what we need is enforcement and education, because everybody's riding their bikes, the little kids, without helmets. And, you know, I have an experience at the death of two, two children from Kenmore, one was a sixth grader, that they just fixed a bike, and he went to over there by Walmart, and when he was coming out of the driveway, a truck hit him, and he died. And he wasn't wearing a helmet, I don't know if we will help him, but we'd never know. But, you know, I see all these students riding bikes even to the schools, and they're not wearing helmets, and nobody says anything. And the other thing is, you walking on the sidewalk, a bike is behind you, and a bike is in front of you in the sidewalk, so you have to move, you know, and I know you're not supposed to ride the bikes in the sidewalk, but I don't know if those people know, so I think that we need maybe talk to the district, because he said they have our education, you know, plan that they can bring to the schools, maybe they can do it, you know, for so, because in the summer is when the accidents happen, you know, when the kids are all over the place. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving along with public communication. If you know further interest, then I'll declare the public communication closed. All right, so let me just, let me just address a couple of things here, because I know there's new residents that are here, but just want to say to Christina, they came up here and talked about the, the housing that we have here, and of course, 70 units that are here. Total over close to, close to 3,000 people applied for the 70-unit apartment that we have here. I mean, it became very competitive, again, only 70 units, so that's a big amount of people that, that apply for that. I have spoken regarding her particular case, but they have so many as well that are also contesting their applications, and I know that Captain Parnell, I believe, spoke to her, so hopefully we could kind of get some kind of clearance on that particular area for that. Then I also want to address something that the gentleman that came up here, the last one that spoke here. Just to let everyone know, those of you that are new, and I have to explain this. Number one, this person is not a resident of the city Baldon Park, he rents a business, which is great, and for him, I have to tell him that, but he is an individual who has learned the process and itself, because he never knew. He literally applied to run for the mayor of city Baldon Park, signed it under perjuries, he perjured himself, so meaning he outright lied that he lived in Baldon Park, supposedly lived on the same street I did, never lived there, and he signed on to it. He came back about two weeks ago, and he said he did it as a joke. When you sign your name, it's a legal tender document, and I could have easily sent that over the district attorney's office for, to investigate him, but I chose not to, and I still stay with that, and I told myself, this individual probably doesn't know. Now, to let everyone know, the constitution of this country is very unique, and no other country has the same constitution that we have. Anyone could come up here and outright lie about anyone up here, he's an expert, everything he said is an outright lie, and hold me accountable to that. Excuse me, excuse me, please, Mr., please don't interrupt me. Okay, all right. So what I'm saying here, the unfortunate part, everyone saw what he did, literally attacked this particular, the Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, that's a vicious attack, and outright unacceptable to anyone. This man, there is, there's an actual, there's an actual restraining order that he has on himself permanently, that was filed by his wife and by the daughter. The daughter, a young teenager, and that's on there. That's why, when he comes in here, I take that very serious. She does not deserve to have anyone, anyone come out here and viciously attack her. I dare him to go do it out in the audience or in a concert and attack that woman. This person has no respect for women, as far as women for him, they are the dirt of the earth, and that's, he made that very clear. He has a lot of anger that he needs to deal with. And the unfortunate part, everything he came up here, a false allegation, he's done that to me, he has special interests, he ran candidates for city council, they lost, so he's very upset, and that's what, that's the bottom line, the reality of this particular individual. I don't want to go into too much, but just so that everyone know, that the constitution allows you to go outright and lie about any politician. She, nor I, nor anyone on here, has no recourse whatsoever. And the interesting thing about that, and I'm not going to mention two of the individuals that are out here that he supports, but it's sad that he chooses to come up here and be very selective, because this, he is a campaign, he is a person who runs a campaign in the city Baldon Park, but to outright do that to your family, I'll tell you, and I know your family personally, really angers me, and I cannot do anything about that other than to share it with the good citizens of the city Baldon Park. But this person, and I'll say it straight out, is a liar, and in Spanish, es un hombre estero, and he's anti-women to the core, has no respect for women at all, and he made it very evident up here today, so I just want to let everyone know that. So at this point, let's, anyone, let's just go ahead and go into the consent calendar.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I have one comment to make. And I hope that, just like you are defending Councilmember Monica Garcia and standing up for her, that you do the same for myself.
Yes, absolutely.
When Councilmember Pacheco starts attacking me and talking lies about me, I would really appreciate that, as a woman. Thank you.
Thank you, and let me just say, and I have been very equal. Matter of fact, I called and I defended Councilmember Susan Rubio. When her husband, you know, attacked you, and made that very public, that is unacceptable. A man that reverts to what did to you, Susan, no different than this individual up here, is unacceptable in this society. No woman should be treated as a second class. And in Baldon Park, if he has issues with Latina women, which I think that's his, that's his primary goal, is that he does not like to see Latina women being successful, and I'm going to make that very clear in this community, this person's business should be boycotted for his outright, for his outrageous attack on women, period.
But Mayor, I'm going to reiterate, I expect and demand that you stop Councilmember Pacheco when he starts attacking me.
You have my word, and I hope that, since you are very close with this individual, that you talk to him to stop what he did. He ran your campaign.
He did not.
He had all your signs in your trunk, all right, let's send it.
He had the signs in my trunk, but he did not run my campaign.
Okay, let's move on to the next, we'll be here all night.
Mayor, if I can?
Okay. Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
And I thank you for your comments. I want to, first of all, say that my, my family is beautiful. Deanna Robles, you've worked with my family. People in this community know my family, and, you know, in my mind, I mean, they're, they're perfect even with all their imperfections, and no matter what is stated here by this individual, that will never change. So I also want to just state that, again, for the record, you know, I've had family members that have fought for this country, and that have fought for the protections that we enjoy as, you know, citizens of this, of this wonderful country, and I understand that there are freedoms of speech, and I would just ask that we all be respectful, and it's unnecessary to go to the level that this person has gone to with his verbal abuse, and trying to instill some emotional abuse, just as he did with his family, apparently according to this TRO, Temporary Restraining Order. And again, I would ask that all colleagues on the city council encourage that treatment, because we do know that, you know, these are individuals that are close to you, Councilmember Cruz Baca, and close to you, Councilmember Susan Rubio, and so I think that you have the ability to encourage greater respect here within the city council. And I'll end with this, there was a temporary restraining order that was requested, and that was between Sheila Ann Tuttle, the former wife of Greg Sebastian Tuttle. And I'll just read a blurb of the TRO, which is a very lengthy document, where she states, "I am seeking this order on an ex parte application based on the fact, the respondent has caused physical harm to our daughter and is mentally abusing both of us, to the point we are in fear of our lives." And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, let's go and go into consent.
Mayor, I want to express something. You know, it's okay to defend yourselves, but you keep making these statements that are not true. So right now, we just said that Mr. Tuttle is very close to me and Baca, I have to speak for myself, because I only know for myself, and I think I've stated it in several council meetings, and I don't know how else to restate it, I am not close to Mr. Tuttle. There's a difference when Mr. Tuttle speaks to me, and he, you know, we have dialogue, we disagree, we talk, and he doesn't attack me, and that seems to be a problem up here. If he doesn't attack me, is that, I mean, I listen to him, he's been coming for 10 years, at some point, you know...
Matter of fact, I called and I defended Councilmember Susan Rubio. When her husband, you know, attacked you and made that very public, that is unacceptable. A man that reverts to what did to you, Susan, no different than this individual up here, is unacceptable in this society. No woman should be treated as a second class. And in Baldwin Park, if he has issues with Latina women, which I think that's his, that's his primary goal, is that he does not like to see Latina women being successful. And I'm going to make that very clear in this community. This person's business should be boycotted for his outright, for his outrageous attack on women, period.
But Mayor, I'm going to reiterate, I expect and demand that you stop Councilmember Pacheco when he starts attacking me.
You have my word and I hope that, since you are very close with this individual, that you talk to him to stop what he did. He ran your campaign.
He did not.
He had all your signs in your truck. All right, let's send it.
He had the signs in my truck, but he did not run my campaign.
Okay, let's move on to the next, we'll be here all night.
Mayor, if I can.
Okay. Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
And I thank you for your comments. I want to, first of all, say that my, my family is beautiful. Deanna Robles, you've worked with my family. People in this community know my family and, you know, in my mind, I mean, they're, they're perfect even with all their imperfections. And no matter what is stated here by this individual, that will never change. So I also want to just state that, again, for the record, you know, I've had family members that have fought for this country and that have fought for the protections that we enjoy as, you know, citizens of this, of this wonderful country. And I understand that there are freedoms of speech and I would just ask that we all be respectful and it's unnecessary to go to the level that this person has gone to with his verbal abuse and trying to instill some emotional abuse, just as he did with his family, apparently according to this TRO, Temporary Restraining Order. And again, I would ask that all colleagues on this city council encourage that treatment because we do know that, you know, these are individuals that are close to you, Councilmember Cruz Baca, and close to you, Councilmember Susan Rubio. And so I think that you have the ability to encourage greater respect here within the city council. And I'll end with this, there was a temporary restraining order that was requested and that was between Sheila Ann Tuttle, the former wife of Greg Sebastian Tuttle. And I'll just read a blurb of the TRO, which is a very lengthy document where she states, "I am seeking this order on an ex parte application based on the fact, the respondent has caused physical harm to our daughter and is mentally abusing both of us to the point we are in fear of our lives." And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, let's go and go into consent.
Mayor, I want to explain something. You know, it's okay to defend yourselves, but you keep making these statements that are not true. So right now, we just said that Mr. Tuttle is very close to me and Baca. I have to speak for myself because I only know for myself and I think I've stated it in several counseling and I don't know how else to restate it. I am not close to Mr. Tuttle. There's a difference when Mr. Tuttle speaks to me and he, you know, we have dialogue, we disagree, we talk, and he doesn't attack me and that seems to be a problem up here. If he doesn't attack me, is that, I mean, I listen to him, he's been coming for 10 years, at some point, you know, I stopped fighting with him because he's not going to go away. But the fact that he doesn't attack us doesn't mean that he's close to us or our friend. I just respect him as an individual. Anybody that wants to come up here and talk has that right. So I'm not going to sit here and engage back and forth. We're better than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Can I just add, I know that this individual has been part of your campaign mailers and there are photos out there, so it would suggest that there is a strong association there and all we're asking is for you to speak with your allies and to let them know that we would like to see a greater respect here within this council.
For the record, that statement is untrue. Again, if you want people to be respectful, then we need to send out the same respect. That statement is untrue. That is not true. And I don't know how else to clarify it. You cannot make statements up here that are not true.
Let's bring the flyer.
And you're claiming that he's making statements that are not true. The only thing I do is I choose not to engage with residents. That's their right or business owners. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll bring the flyer in next time.
All right.
I think, I think that the key here is respect. You have to earn the respect in order to get the respect. And I'm a firm believer of that. I was brought up that way. So you need to respect someone in order to get it back. You don't, it's not for free or it's not because you won an election. You have to win the respect and the trust of people and I'm a firm believer of that.
So I would add that during my campaigns, when there have been negative mailers against me that I have heard, you know, you and Councilmember Susan Rubio have been part of, are you saying that I should no longer respect you? I, I think that here on this council, we are colleagues and we should be respectful of each other. And what I'm asking is that you just encourage that in your own actions with your, with your friends and with your allies.
Here, you are assuming, you have never asked me personally, you have never asked me personally. Cruz, did you send out that flyer? You have never asked me. You're assuming because you think, because of comments. So if I see a negative flyer about myself, I'm going to assume, depending on what you told me at one of the special meetings, how you felt about me, out loud in front of a lot of people, if I see something negative, I'm going to assume, I don't, I don't make assumptions. I will come to you and I will ask you.
Okay, let's move on, let's move on to the next, let's move on to consent calendar.
Okay, Mayor, just really quick, I'd like to also point out that there have been, never been any negative mailers against Cruz Baca or Susan Rubio.
That's great. All right, let's move on, you guys. All right, so at this point, before I forget, announce that this is the, this is to announce as required by government code, section 54952.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go over to consent calendars, any council member wishing to pull any items one through seven. See, now at this point, I will move for consent calendars, items one through seven, that is my motion. Okay, second, any objection, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, any objections? See, now.
Just real quickly for clarification purposes, number seven.
Yes.
Does it mean to read major street?
That's correct. That's a typo. It's a major street rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought. Thank you.
You thought Lozano Drive.
That's right. Okay. All right, so let's go over to the public hearing, which is item A, which is a request for a consideration of amendment to table 153.050 in the city's municipal code allowing automobile towing businesses with accessory vehicle storage with approval of the conditional use permit. Location, all 1C industrial commercial properties applicant city Baldwin Park, case number AZC-181, the album, the distinguished Amy Harbin.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. As the mayor stated before you, is a request to amend the zoning code to allow automobile towing and accessory storage of vehicles associated with automobile towing within the IC industrial commercial zone. We've been at this since about early 2015 and in several city council study sessions, there's been discussion about amending the code to allow this type of use, provided that development standards are included. However, it wasn't until recently the city council directed staff to move forward with the code amendment. Depending on the location of the proposed use within the IC zone, and the IC zone is along the freeway, Arrow Highway primarily, it could have negative impacts upon adjacent properties. Hence, the staff is requesting that development standards be met prior to opening and conducting this type of business. Those primary development standards include that the proposed automobile towing and accessory storage facility be a minimum of 3,000 feet away from any other automobile towing and accessory vehicular storage business. Two, that a conditional use permit be approved by the planning commissioner of the city council on appeal. And that also a decorative perimeter block wall be installed around the property, which would reduce impacts on adjacent properties. These development standards would obviously be in addition to any conditions of approval. Staff in the planning commission recommend as, excuse me, as part of a conditional use permit. And typical conditions of approval include hours of operation, all work being conducted within a building and then no outside storage of flammable materials, tires, things of that nature. We did look at the impact of this proposed code amendment on existing automobile towing and storage businesses in Baldwin Park. We do have three of them. They may be, they may continue to operate, however, any newly proposed towing and automobile storage businesses would have to meet the most current zoning code requirements. So at this time, staff in the planning commission are recommending the city council open the public hearing and following the public hearing, introduce for first reading by title only and waive further reading ordinance 1382 entitled, "An ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, California, amending Baldwin Park Municipal Code, Table 153.050.020, in subchapter 153.050 entitled, Commercial and Industrial Zones." And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will open up anyone wishing to speak specifically on this particular ordinance to come up at this point. So I'll take those in favor. Those opposed? Okay, see no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. So at this point, council members, is this for the one on Garvey, am I correct? As one of them. All right, so I'll go ahead and motion the staff in ordinance number 1382 entitled, as an ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, California, amending Baldwin Park's municipal code, table 153.050.020, subchapter 153.050 entitled, Commercial and Industrial Zones. That is my, okay, second by, by council member, oh, by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, any objections? See, now so move. This points reports of officers, the approval resolution of entitled a resolution of the city council of city Baldwin Park, California, appointed representatives. You know what, I want to move this over, but what I want to do is, is bring this to the following meeting. Wanted to appoint Renee, but let's go ahead and move this over to the following meeting, okay?
This is the council appointment.
Yeah. Yeah, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and move that over. That's my motion. And then, and also, yeah, and also review of current applications and then, and 10 as well, let's move that over.
Second.
Nine and 10, second, any objections? Oh, just moving it over to the following meeting.
A motion by the mayor and a second by Vice Mayor.
Yes, okay.
I have a question, are the ladies that, I mean, one of them that came to speak, is she gone?
Yeah, Renee, we definitely want to place her on there. Let's do that, the following meeting. Absolutely. All righty, so.
Is there a vote on that, Mayor?
Yes, there's a, the motion was second, to move it over to the following meeting. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and move for a German of the city council, that's my motion. Any objections? Item 10. Yes, it is, I said item both nine and 10, yes, that was my motion. All right, so at this point, there's been a second, a German of the city council, any objections? See, now so move. This point, I'd like to open up the housing authority and we have the, the housing authority. Okay, we have the consent calendars, items one, which is the treasurer's report.